Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. This time I'd like to call the council meeting to order and be of the first two thousand seven. At this time, alas, folks do stand for the pledge of allegiance and... Will the clerk please call the roll?
McMahon, present. Dick Negerzschew, present. Johnson, present. Frombetta, present. Kelladrino, Perkins, Descanti, Chides, Esposito, Sani, Cabo, Vaso. Vaso, present. Cotello, here. Diggs, here. Taichos, here. And that. Well, hey. Seaberry, here. Stanley, here. Taverzak, here.
Councilman Riley, is he here? Riley. Okay, there being nineteen present, two absent. Mr. Descanti, who directly reflects us out of the state right now, and we have one vacant. Of those two absences, we have one vacant. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for comments by the members of the public. I would ask that any member of the public that wishes to address the council tonight must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city and must address the council by an item that is specifically on the agenda. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening?
I live at one seven nine Long Beach Road, Danbury, and I wish to address the council and tell them that they should vote for this item number eighteen on your list. It's the parade legislation, and I think that the people who live in or near Main Street in Danbury need to have legislation to address the problem of impromptu parades and noise and several other things that this legislation does address. And I think that everyone in the council, I believe also that it addresses the First Amendment provisions that we have, and I do not think that the Danbury News Times was accurate in its coverage today.
That's not different. They're always accurate.
Not really. But I thank the council for bringing this legislation up. It doesn't need to be four more years before anything is done about these impromptu parades, and I think it's formidable that you are doing this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening?
My name is Zansco, Danbury, living inside our unit. And in reference to item eighteen regarding the impromptu parades, I think this is a great piece of work, and it definitely needs to be done. However, may I ask a question?
Generally, no, but if it's a quickie, I'll see if I can answer. Go ahead.
Well, okay. I understand that the ordinance provides a high, if the ordinance is required, movement. Well, if it is, how do you let it come?
It will be done through our research and our community, this item enforcement process.
Obviously, when the ordinance is clear, that's how it is. You should not do it on the... If, if, if...
I think I'm going to take the top half of this side. Pretty much a vote in Danbury, so you're...
...because we cannot obtain the... Our work has the additional stuff that I have a few times, and I have entirely new concrete. Back of the night, two hours in the morning, I did not want to protect the post in the evening. Or when the chief prepared to sue the results in the year, the order to be supported couldn't be approved. Often, order to be passed, you don't need to do this stuff for the year. They consider you a... I would immediately raise an assembly for getting you in. July twenty second, two thousand and three, eighty times before the... You know, it's a short, small... Number, President, Officer Murphy, Detective Robert Williams, John Gabriatina, Detective Robert McCafferty, Dean Miorio, also President Deputy Chief Martin Posado, Helen Simpson, Chief Officer Carl Murphy. Agenda: Pension request of Lieutenant Carl Foley. Motion to approve Lieutenant Foley's job-related disability request at sixty-eight percent at top lieutenant's pay, effective July twenty-second, two thousand and three. Discussion: None. Motion made by John Gabriatina, second made by Robert Williams, vote unanimous. There's no reference to steps. Maybe the board realized the steps are arbitrary, they could be changed with each contract. The key words here are "at top lieutenant's pay." Now, four years later, I am told that this is being changed by Mayor Bowden, that I am no longer entitled to top lieutenant's pay. Mayor Bowden can change his mind, but he can't change history. My late friend, Austin Dodge, had a saying when he felt someone was pulling a fast one. He would say, "My mama may erase a lot of my kids, but she didn't raise any stupid ones." I hope somehow Officer Dodge knows that I am contesting this issue on behalf of this beloved Elaine, his widow. If the city elects to contest the top lieutenant's pay pension board ruling tonight, I will consider the agreement null and void. I respectfully request Chief Baker contact me and put me back on the payroll pending litigation. Thank you.
Mr. Foley, any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sean Toll. I'm representing El Canagito, which is a Spanish-American newspaper, which is here in town, and I'm addressing the item on the agenda regarding the newspaper racks and the proposed ordinance on that. And the intent of the ordinance, as I read the intent of the ordinance, is not to, chapter to discriminate against, regulate, or interfere with the publication, circulation, distribution, or dissemination of any printed material, but when I go, you know, we are supportive of a general order of ordinance on this matter, but when I go into the details, we have some issues with the details that would be prohibitively, you know, material financial hardship on our business, which is the only local, all-invent operated, you know, newspaper in the community. And the issues we have are the height of the new, the height of the new state, the height can be more important to any issues we just spent this one thousand dollars on, on lots of, six, they don't need a plan, so if you're serious planning to launch it to us, then effectively now, we tend to, we, we... And then the second point is, is available metal, not only in coordination, as metal and plastic now, or the use of, not the other, you know, that they did, or off paper, or some real big names, but all plastic. You have to know on yourself, you have to know on plastic, or you can better, you can... The road has been out, it's all the same, early, it drove, it's all seen, above, over the... And then another one I would like to make is, talks about the lettering on the racks. We have a logo for a thousand dollar, a red and gray, blue, and white, it's a series of ordnance. But the point is, it's a lot of detail that is materially impactful to the industry, and not really intended to... And it's a, you tend to, you're not discriminating, or you're not doing the publication, circulation, distribution of information. Like, there's no way that you build a reading aspect of what we did, because we wouldn't be able to, you know, take down boxes, material planning, you wouldn't be able to, you know, new boxes of... That is, now, I was planning, clearly, I don't think, while we're supportive of an ordinance that, you know, fights material regulations, but in fact, the drawing board, and the other would be, you know, we were publicly consulted, and it said, there are one local, one operated, we expect there to be, we, 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 we call them chance to be consulted, and, 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 and,[875.12]
Things on the board that you do have to jump through hoops. I tried to do a rally last, some of the rally. I cannot begin to tell you the hoops. I finally gave up. I just said, forget it, it's not worth all it has between the permitting and the paperwork and the insurance and everything else. So you do have all this already covered. And there's no reason to pass another law restricting freedom of speech, freedom of gathering in the city. As far as impromptu driving down the streets, my first wedding, my whole procession was plastic pokers. There was fourteen of them blasting down Main Street in Danbury. Horns honking, the cops were stopping traffic, thumbs up, everybody was waving, everybody was happy. I can't see how we can stop that from happening. That's an impromptu thing because I happen to not put a flag on the hood of my car and beep my horn and drive around town. Doesn't make me any different than somebody driving a large, loud automobile on the way home to the wedding. We seem to have a double standard here. This is not the answer. This is restricting our rights, this is stopping us from gathering. If we have something that happens in town that a bunch of us want to get together and go down the town hall, does this ordinance mean that, oh, oh, there's more than twenty-five of you here? You're now all in trouble. You know, there's ways around this, and I think this is a real bad idea, and I urge you to support it. Thank you for your time. Yeah.
I got stuck one morning on the front two traffic jams, and there were a lot of cars getting stopped by policemen, and I assumed it was for safety reasons because a lot of Jeep-type vehicles had many, many, they were very overloaded with people hanging out. And besides that, the whole city traffic was disrupted. Also, I remember that there was not nearly as much traffic down the avenue as there is now.
You remember nineteen hundred?
Exactly.
How old are you? Sorry, you put it right out there.
The thing is, I think, I think, I think that the having, having, whatever, having organized decreases the safe, or increases the safety problems that I saw many, many cars being pulled over by policemen, and they were, they were just safety issues. And another thing is, there's, there's tons and tons more traffic out than there was back then. I would also, I would also make the fine much, much higher.
Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? Yes, sir. Patricia, I'll get you next.
My name is Dick Rousch, and I live at Seven Ridge Road. I have addressed, by way of letter, the parade ordinances, proposed parade ordinances to the mayor and to the Corporation Council. I represent an education organization at Western Connecticut State University. It's called Phi Delta Kappa. It's a small organization locally, but worldwide, it's a very, quite large organization, about sixty thousand members. And three years ago, this organization decided to, that it needed to promote education on a local level, universal opportunity for education, public education. And so it developed a program whereby there would be a Walk for Education in various localities, actually worldwide, over sixty countries. Locally, the Western Connecticut State University chapter, Phi Delta Kappa, relatively small organization. We have approximately one hundred and twenty-five members. The education and educational psychology department is fully of Western Connecticut State University, are all members of the organization. And many superintendents of schools, principals, teachers are members. And we have planned, this organization has planned for an annual Walk for Education, and we have the last three years had such a walk. You probably haven't noticed it because there were very few people. However, it is growing. And what we're concerned about basically is not the parade ordinance, but where it affects our pocketbook. We raise money in the annual Walk for Education in addition to the public relations point of view. And as we think about our, the parade, if you will, or the walk, we realize that there are a lot of groups that raise money for their organizations and raise the awareness of their programs, for example, the Crock Walk, which just was completed in so long. Now, we do not oppose the idea that we need to talk with city authorities, the police department, have a, fill out forms or whatever it is. But we are concerned, since we raise very little money, which go for scholarships for prospective educators, that, and although you may think that one hundred dollars fee as proposed is a very little amount of money, it would mean one hundred dollars less for us, a small organization, as I mentioned. We're not there to raise money, but we're there to raise the level of understanding of the public for public education, and also to raise money for scholarships for prospective educators, and also for the doctoral program at Western Connecticut State University for research. Because those are our tenets. We believe in research, leadership, and service to our community. So we do not oppose the, the idea that we need to register our walk, but we do oppose the idea of a fee imposed upon us. We hope that it would be waived or whatever you might consider. Thank you for the time, I appreciate your, your consideration.
Good evening. Patricia Bowlin, Route thirty-six, Valerie Lane. I'm here to speak to you this evening against the parade public assembly ordinance. I do not know the particulars of any other ordinances that may be on the books that govern the other parades that we do engage in and represent and watch during the course of our years. I only know the language of the ordinance that is before you this evening. I read it several times, and I will tell you that there are many instances that I could give you, but I'm not going to bore you with all the specifics that I think people, in a public expression of spontaneity, for whatever their, their event would be, would be breaking through a law. I can sell fairly well up on the issues and problems that are being present in the city of Danbury. And prior to the World Cup soccer events, it did not appear that such an ordinance or a problem was evident in our community that would have resulted in this type of a response. It is my perception that this ordinance is a response to that particular time period and what occurred down on Main Street. I must share with you personally that I was fortunate in working in an office on Main Street, the corner of Library Place at that time. And when I realized what was happening during that week, not only did I witness joy, life, spirit, exuberance, pride of ethnic background, and pride of the place where these people currently live being displayed on the street of Main Street, which was a joyful, wonderful thing to see, but I also witnessed the marvelous professional behavior of the police department when they were assigned to go down on Main Street and to interact with the people as the week went on. They did their job professionally, they could hold their head up high with the police department in New York City because they did a wonderful job, all the while engaging in a human relationship with the people who were celebrating on Main Street. It was a wonderful thing to behold. I would hate to have spontaneous events that are part of our human condition be restricted by laws. Pretty soon, we are going to have an event that occurs every year. I have seven children, they're adults now, the oldest is in the late forties, they all graduated from Danbury High School. And let me tell you, I helped them decorate their cars so that they could seamlessly drive down Main Street, celebrating the end of their twelve years of education in the city of Danbury. And let me tell you, that's coming soon, and all you need is six cars filled with seniors celebrating, and you are breaking the restrictions of that particular law. And I suspect Henry Abatech and Immaculate probably do it to a lesser degree. I would hate to have that spontaneous expression of joy and exuberance and pride have to be curtailed because they can't pay that money, the permit, they can't have the time or don't have the time to do all of the restrictions that are in there to get a permit. Let us celebrate the exuberance and spirit and, and life of joyous things in our community instead of imposing restrictions and laws on them. What I would suggest to the city and to the council members, that instead of voting on this particular ordinance, put it on hold for a while. Think about it. We have a city that addresses the issues for the citizens. They have department officials, they have community people that plan a procedure to respond to disasters. I would suggest that a similar committee be called into existence to have similar procedures put into place by those very same departments and entities in our community to respond to the joyous expression of human life.
That will conclude the public speaking of our meeting this evening. We'll now move on to our regularly scheduled agenda. Mr. President, the minutes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes as all members have copies and copies are on file in the City Clerk's office.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of the minutes as all members have copies. Are there any deletions, change, or additions to the minutes? The, 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 deletions, change, or minutes to, excuse me, are there any additions, changes, or deletions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and adopt some of the minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar from May first, two thousand and seven. Seven, receive the communication and approve the transfer of ten thousand dollars into the Fire Department Special Services Account Number two zero one zero dot five zero five two. Eight, receive the communication and approve the request to sell two surplus fire pumpers to the highest bidder. Nine, receive the communication and approve the transfer of six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars from the Town Clerk's Budget Line Historic Document Reserve Account into the amount, in the amount of six thousand dollars to line item number one one six zero dot five seven zero one, and nine hundred and thirty dollars to line item one one six zero dot five seven oh one. Thirteen, receive the communication and approve the acquisition of easements outlined therein. Fourteen, receive the communication and approve the resolution to authorize the named agencies to apply for and accept funding in the form of tax credits from the State of Connecticut Neighborhood Assistant Act. Fifteen, receive the communication and approve the resolution authorizing the City of Danbury Department of Health and Housing to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health in the amount of six hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. Sixteen, receive the communication and approve the resolution to authorize the City of Danbury Police Department to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department Transportation for the two thousand and seven Memorial Day and Fourth of July, driving under the influence enforcement program. Nineteen, receive the report and approve the ordinance. Twenty, receive the report and approve the ordinance. Twenty-one, receive the report and approve the ordinance. Twenty-four, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committees. Twenty-five, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Madam Majority Leader, with your pleasure, Council, Councilman Tabersek.
Your Honor, could number nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one be removed from consent?
Any other discussion about the consent calendar? With your pleasure, Council. Mr. President.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion at this time that we approve the consent as presented with nineteen, twenty, and twenty by Mrs. Tabersek.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Bassel. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication, promotions, Danbury Fire Department. Your county council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the promotion of Robert J. Keenan, Jr., fourteen country Ridge Road, Danbury, to the position of Assistant Fire Chief of the Danbury Fire Department. Robert Keenan was appointed firefighter in November nineteen seventy-three, promoted to lieutenant in September nineteen eighty-four, and promoted to captain in January of nineteen ninety-nine. Captain Keenan lives with his wife Linda, and they have two daughters, Tammy and Preston.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move to receive the communication, confirm the promotion of Robert Keenan to Assistant Chief in the Danbury Fire Department.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Trumbetta. Any discussion about Mr. Keenan? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor of his appointment to Assistant Chief, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Bob, are you in here somewhere? Where are you? There you are. Congratulations. Assistant Chief is one of the highest positions we have in the Danbury Fire Department, so, Bob, I want to congratulate you for moving up through the ranks since nineteen seventy-three, and you've been committed to this department since the day you were sworn as a firefighter, and now to have this capstone on your career is a wonderful testament to the care that you have for the city. I know you brought some family members. Would you like to introduce who you got here with you?
Like Linda.
Thank you, Linda. Congratulations.
I am also pleased to submit for your confirmation the promotion of Ronald T. Bowers, twenty-eighteen Road, New Melford, Connecticut, to the position of captain. Ron Bowers was appointed firefighter in July nineteen eighty-five and promoted to lieutenant in June nineteen ninety-four. Lieutenant Bowers has graduated from Danbury High School, is a certified EMT, and is the winner of several citations for actions in the line of duty. Ron lives with his wife Samantha and their two children, Ty and Calvin.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Once again, I'd like to move to receive the communication, confirm the promotion of Ronald Bowers to captain within the Danbury Fire Department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Sheeney. Any discussion about Mr. Bowers? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds about his appointment to captain. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Bowers is traveling today. He sentences regrets, but he's honored by the appointment by the council, and there is a swearing-in tomorrow, Jenny, what time? At fifteen hundred here in the council chambers, so certainly all the county council members are invited to that swearing-in, so. Madam Clerk.
I am also pleased to submit for your confirmation the promotion of Thomas S. Corbett, three Mulberry Lane, Melford, Connecticut, to the position of lieutenant. Firefighter Corbett was appointed to the Danbury Fire Department in July nineteen ninety-seven. Thomas, an EMT four, has received several letters of commendation for his actions in the line of duty. Firefighter Corbett was one of the main speakers of the dedication ceremony for the City of Danbury September eleventh Memorial in Elmwood Park. Tom lives with his wife Sue and their four children. Thomas, Melissa, Candice, and Amanda.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to receive the communication, confirm the promotion of Tom Corbett to lieutenant in the Danbury Fire Department.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Sheeney. Is there any discussion about the promotion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Tom, congratulations. Tom, on behalf of the City of Danbury, the county council, the mayor's office, I want to congratulate you on this appointment. It's a wonderful achievement in your career. You've done a great job up till now. We know you're going to continue to do a terrific job for the residents of our city. I know you brought somebody with you. If you could introduce us.
Yes, my lovely wife, Stu.
Thank you, Stu. Madam Clerk.
I'm also pleased to submit for your confirmation the promotion of Fred Pollard, Jr., fifty-three, Old Holyville Road, Bethel, to the position of lieutenant. Firefighter Pollard was appointed to the Danbury Fire Department in November nineteen ninety-one. Is a certified EMT and has volunteered his carpentry skills on several occasions to improve fire department facilities. Firefighter Pollard currently serves on a committee studying a new radio system for the city of Danbury. Fred is a U.S. Navy veteran and lives with his wife Pam and their two children, Jeremy and Kimberly. Thank you for consideration of these appointments. Sincerely, Mark D. Bateman.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to receive the communication and confirm the promotion of Fred Pollard to lieutenant in the Danbury Fire Department.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Cabo. Any discussion about Mr. Pollard's promotion to lieutenant? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor of the promotion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Fred, congratulations. Again, Fred, I want to congratulate you on reaching this in your career ladder. It's a wonderful testament to your care and concern for the residents of our city. I know you brought somebody with you, so I'd like you to introduce us because we're nosy to your family members.
That's my wife, Tam.
All of our new, newly elevated firefighters, congratulations, and to the families, thank you for spending those times to share with us with your firefighter. Tomorrow at three o'clock, we'll have a swearing-in for Chief Harold and for our new Assistant Chief, Mr. Keenan, and for the rest of the crew that just got appointed tonight. We encourage the council to attend. It should be a nice event. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Your county, oh, two, two. Communication, request for ad hoc charter remission commission.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilman Trumbetta.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and refer to an ad hoc committee consisting of the Corporation Council.
An ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Trumbetta, Councilwoman Stanley, and Councilman Lotello. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Communication, donation to Ken, to Kenwood Park. Your county council members, more than fifty, may? Your county council members, please accept this donation from Miss Cynthia Bell Schreiber in Memorial, to her sister Patricia Schreiber, who passed away in a car accident on April seventeen, two thousand and six. A letter from Miss Schreiber is included. I have all, I have spoken to Antonio, Director of Public Works, about the donation and believe the bench will be a nice addition to the current renovations that are being undertaken at our town park. The cost of the bench is four hundred and fifty dollars, and OEG Incorporated will deliver the bench to a determined location by our public works. Would be a hope for the city to send their deepest sympathy to the Schreiber family and a letter of thanks to OEG as well as Cynthia Bell Schreiber. Sincerely, Richard J. Antos, Jr., coordinator of Office of Neighborhood Assistance.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make motion to receive the communication and accept this donation from Miss Cynthia Bell Schreiber in Memorial to her sister Patricia Schreiber, and send our condolences along with a letter of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Sheeney. Is there any discussion about the donation? Mrs. Tabersek.
Just a question for you, to Mr. Kaplantis, if he could. I understand a lot of work is going on at the town park, and I believe that the benches that used to be along the wall and the shallow swimming area near the boat launch have been all removed. Is that correct?
They're still there. They're still there.
So this won't be the only bench available for people to sit on? I don't want there to be any fights breaking out.
No, they're still there, and there's about fifteen, maybe ten picnic tables that we just took delivery on two days ago that we're also going to be replacing out there.
Thank you.
Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor of the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item four, please.
Dedication, donations to the Danbury Library, Dear Mayor and Bounty. Danbury Library has received a donation from Emerson Charitable Trust on behalf of Branson Ultrasonics Corporation, forty-one Eagle Road, Danbury, Connecticut, in the amount of two thousand dollars. Please place this item on the agenda for the May council meeting as this donation needs to be deposited into the Danbury Library Fund donations. Sincerely, Mark D. Hassel, Library Director.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilman Negash.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make the motion to receive the communication, accept the donation, deposit the donation into libraryfund dot four six five one donations and send the appropriate letters.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Sheeney. Just a little quicker there, Councilwoman. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Communication, donation to the city shelter for Macy's. To the Honorable Mayor and Bounty Council regarding Macy's food drive. The City of Danbury received a generous donation of soup and crackers from the staff at Macy's. This donation enables the city shelter to provide food that the clients can self-prepare at this sheltered facility. I'm requesting that the county council accept this sincere and generous donation. Sincerely, Amy H. Budnig, Director of Welfare and Park, the Temple of C and M.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Dix.
I want to make a motion to receive the communication and accept this generous donation for Macy's, and please send our letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Bassel. Is there any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Communication, donation to the city shelter from Weston Gift Card. The City of Danbury's homeless shelter presented at Miss Cuffington's sociology class at Western United States University on March seventh, two thousand and seven. Shelter case work brought a panel of three individuals who are homeless and staying at the shelter to present to the students. The panel shared their insight and experience as a person who is homeless. To thank the staff and clients for the presentation, the Weston professor donated forty-five dollars in gift cards to the city's homeless shelter, and requesting that the council accept this generous donation. Sincerely, Amy H. Budnig.
With your pleasure, Council. Councilman Seabird.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make the motion to receive the communication, to accept the donation of the gift card from Professor Cuffington's in our sociology class and send a letter of thanks to all of them.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Opposed signify by saying nay. Eyes have it motion carries unanimously. Items seven, eight, and nine are on consent. Madam clerk, item ten, please.
Communication, Candlewood Park concession lease. Given your bounty and honorable members of the council, Candlewood Park concession has been closed for the past two years and the lease that was in place has lapsed. The purchasing department had requested proposals to lease slash operate the concession stand. The board of awards met and approved to enter into a lease agreement for a period of three years with Miss Deborah Nigri to operate concession stand. Miss Nigri is a successful businesswoman who owned a shop in Danbury for many years. Her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Michael Kudiac, successfully ran the session at Candlewood for over ten years. Deborah has committed her personal finances to equip the building with the necessary items to operate and to comply with permit agency requirements. I respectfully request you approve the agreement. Very truly yours, Nick Copelandis, director of recreation.
It's a pleasure, councilman Mr. Cavill.
Thank you, your honor. This time I'd like to make a motion that we authorize you or your authorized agent to enter into the agreement, sign the lease agreement for the Candlewood Park concessions.
Motion's been made and seconded by... Councilwoman Bassow, is there any discussion regarding the lease?
Thank you. Again, in the ongoing for an ad hoc, can I cooperate with the council with a view of the lease?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Pencher.
Thank you, Councilman Sheeney. The lease, as proposed, is for three summers at this point. It begins with a rent of a hundred and fifty dollars and at the end of the three-year term, it's up to approximately four fifty. It's intended to give the lessee, the operator of the concession stand, the chance to build up the inventory, to put machinery equipment at the facility, and that's why the lease grant is a little bit lower at the beginning than at the end of that term. And tradition has it that the Candlewood facility operates just for the summer months, obviously. Beginning May first, ending on Labor Day, and the occupant is given the chance to have to get a health permit, the permits required to operate, sell their wares, and have exclusive operations and propocation.
Questions, Mr. Sheeney.
Regarding the lease, is this the lease as a standard lease of what was given in the past by this new lease?
It's a standard lease. It mimics all of the leases, all of the leases that are provided to previous tenants starting in probably nineteen eighty-eight or even the oldest lease in this county was a limited.
Is there any kind of bond required in this lease? The family just physically building itself?
There is an insurance requirement. There's no bonding requirement. The city staff will inspect periodically. The lessee does give its commitment, the lease standard clauses, to protect, preserve the property during the course of operations and to determine property in a condition that's in good condition at the end.
Are there questions about the proposals? Mr. Sade.
Thank you, your honor. If I may, I'll give the chair to Mr. Copelandis or whoever be able to answer this question. Just had, I would like to know how the amount of the rent or the lease was determined.
Basically, the package went out to bid. We had two people that responded. Mrs. Nigri was one. She committed to three years. The first bidder, or the other bidder responded with only a one-year commitment. The amount of his lease for the first, for the one year was a little bit higher than her proposal. We felt that for longevity and, you know, the ratchet increases in the commitment would be worthwhile to go in early.
Thank you. No further questions. Just a statement that generally, these types of lease agreements, we would, as a council, send to an ad hoc committee. But under the, as the exigent circumstances here and a holiday Memorial Day coming up, we want to ensure that the lessee has all the opportunities to make this a successful operation, both for the city and herself. So that'll be supporting this.
Thank you. I appreciate it and I know that Miss Nigri will appreciate it also.
Any further discussion about the proposals, Mr. Otter?
Thank you, your honor. To council, are there any performance metrics built into the lease? This would be if customers were dissatisfied or something. Do we have a way of checking that? And this is, believe me, I'm not casting any light on this woman. I'm sure she is. I'm sure she's going to be great. But in general, when we make leases like this, regardless of whether for the town park, it could be for Hatters Park, or Rogers Park, or the airport, do we have a way of making sure that the quality is up to snout?
Just, councilwoman Lotello, by monitoring the operations on a regular basis. There are standard lease provisions. This one has them included, which requires healthy, good, sensible operations. There's nothing more specific than that in terms of regulating the operations within. It's considered a, this individual would be considered to be required to operate in a manner which a facility like this, a park like this, would expect to operate under the circumstances.
If I may, if I want to...
Please proceed.
If there was a problem, and again, let's not, let this particular lease aside, I don't want to... I don't even want to, you know... Forget about the town park. If there's an issue with the performance, what steps can the city take to revoke the lease?
Well, the first would be notice to the occupant that they're not doing something in accordance with requirements of the rules of law. If they don't comply with that corrective action, then we would tip enforcement action either to a small claims action or a simple litigation. I think it would be noticed first and opportunity for them to correct the issue.
And that's stated in the lease?
It's not stated in the lease, but it is stated in law. It's stated as a matter of common practice and accepted practice prior to taking serious enforcement action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion regarding the lease? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor of the lease, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay. Eyes have it motion carries unanimously. Madam clerk, item eleven, please.
Dedication, request for ad hoc noise ordinance.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman McMahon.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee of corporation council.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Bassow, Councilman Negash, and Councilman Visconti. Madam clerk, item twelve, please.
Dedication, proposed ordinance, administration of military service leave.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Trumbetta.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to receive the communication and refer to an ad hoc committee consisting of corporation council, the director of personnel, as well as a representative from the mayor's office.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Diggs, Councilwoman Bassow, and Councilman Esposito. Items thirteen through sixteen were consent. Madam clerk, item seventeen, please.
Report and ordinance, police pension revisions.
Okay. We are at item seventeen. Council, we certainly would entertain a motion to waive the reading of the report unless the council wants the entire report read as all members have copy and are filed with the city clerk. Motion made by Mr. Lotello, seconded by Mr. Seabird to waive the reading of the report. All's in favor of waiving the reading of the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. We're now onto the main motion. It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Saraceno.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion that we receive the report and approve the ordinance.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Riley. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sade.
Thank you, your honor. While Mr. Foley's issue that he spoke to this evening seems to be somewhat limited to the specific facts and circumstances of his case and other people who would find themselves in a similar situation based on a vote of the pension board, I'll be voting in the negative tonight on this based on the detailed concerns I raised during the committee meeting on this issue. I won't belabor that, but I have concerns that go beyond the issues that were just brought up here tonight by the public, which are enumerated in the committee report. Thank you.
Mr. Sade, any further discussion about this issue? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
For the negatives, please register. We can promptly record you. That would be Councilwoman Taberse. Councilman Sade. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Tyshultz is abstaining. Please let the record reflect that. Madam clerk, item eighteen, please.
Report and ordinance, parade and public assemblies.
Again, council, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the report as all members have copies and there is a copy and file of the city clerk. Councilman Saraceno. Seconded by Mr. Cabo. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Waiving the reading of the report, yes, ma'am. Okay. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay. We're now down to the main motion. It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Seabird.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and to approve the ordinance.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Trumbetta. Discussion. Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, your honor. If you please, I would like to make a couple statements regarding the ordinance. Thank you. First of all, I question the legality based upon the constitutionality of this particular ordinance. I think that in some ways that it will be targeting one group or another group in somewhat unfair way. And it goes against my cause to vote for something like this. Secondly, I think that the city of Danbury is placing itself in a position of jeopardy where down the line, this ordinance would be found to be unconstitutional and litigation would follow, would follow, and it would probably be huge. And ultimately, the taxpayer would be the one that would pick up the cost. The next point I'd like to make, and I only have two more. The next point I'd like to make is that there are laws on the books that exist. And our fine police department have always maintained a good job when it came to those people or groups that are spontaneous in a way, in a nice way. I don't think anytime that people are spontaneous, I don't look at it as something that is so terrible that we need an ordinance in place. I would recommend, I would recommend that we put in place an educational aspect that would address those groups that might not know the law, might not know the law of the land, and try our very best to educate them to what is the responsibility to one when they have a spontaneous parade? What is the, what are the factors that could take place, whether they might be positive or then also negative? So I think that this is really opening up a can of worms and, you know, we're all immigrants at one time. I'm against illegal immigration. I'm against it. But I am for, I am for immigration and I'm not for, I'm not for hiding behind a gray area where we might target one and not the other. So I'm going to definitely vote no on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. I appreciate your comments. Councilman Saraceno.
Thank you, your honor. My comments with regard to this are on the record from the other night, but I do believe, and as I said, that we covered the constitutional issues for... And everybody's been focused on the negative parts of this ordinance in public speaking and comments that have been made here. I'd like to ask, if I could direct a couple of questions to Police Chief about some of the other aspects that are really here.
Please proceed, Councilwoman Chief.
Chief, if there was a group that assembled spontaneously without a permit and blocked pedestrian traffic or blocked vehicle or traffic, they would be subject to action by the police and perhaps arrest. Is that right or wrong?
That is correct.
So if they were to ask for a permit, which there would be no fee because it would be for the sole purpose of the First Amendment rights, then they would be allowed to assemble on the sidewalk or on the street. So is that correct?
Sure.
So the point here being that this actually offers an opportunity for people to assemble by merely letting the police department know so that they can provide the appropriate public safety protection, that the fire department knows that they have to reroute if necessary, things of that sort. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The other thing I wanted to ask you, Chief, before this ordinance, there were fees assessed to groups that had parades, like the Memorial Day Parade, or the St. Patrick's Day Parade, or parades of that sort, for the police protection that was provided. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And could you enlighten us as to how much that actually costs? Because there was some concern here tonight that this hundred dollars was an egregious amount of money. How much would it cost to pay for a parade if this ordinance were not enacted?
It really depends on the size of the celebration, the length of the parade. It'd cost several thousand dollars if this order had cost.
Yeah, well, if I'm not mistaken, twenty minutes, half hour St. Patrick's Day parade, police bill is approximately fifteen hundred dollars. Is that correct?
That sounds pretty close. It's sitting at my desk.
So with this ordinance being passed, an organization that wanted to have a parade to celebrate a community event could go for a permit and at most pay a hundred dollars and not have to pay these fees if this ordinance is passed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, councilman. Further discussion, Mr. Cavill?
Thank you, your honor. In echoing Mrs. Saraceno's comments, I've been also noted in public speaking portion the other night at the public hearing and also printed in today's News Times. But I would like to ask Mr. Gachak if he would address the issue of constitutionality as was questioned here tonight and what his feelings are since he is an attorney and I am not.
Oh, this is just a short answer.
Can you sum it up in about, can you sum it up in three or four words?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gachak.
About five words. Reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions are permitted by the Constitution when it comes to regulation of First Amendment rights. You're not allowed to prohibit speech, but you are allowed to make sure that the balance is struck between the rights of people to, the rights of some people to speak and the rights of others to enjoy their liberties. So that's what this ordinance attempts to do. Do you want more? There is more.
Mr. Gachak, did you have any conversations with the ACLU regarding this particular piece of legislation?
Yes, I can tell you this, that when we started working on this ordinance, we began with a model ordinance, or at least that's what it was represented to be by the International Municipal Lawyers Association. The next thing that happened was the ACLU questioned some of the provisions in the ordinance that have been proposed by our office, by my office. The next thing that happened was we called IMLA to say, what's going on with your model ordinance? Because some of the comments that we received from the ACLU made very good sense. Some of their objections made sense. And the answer we got from IMLA was that, well, yeah, it was the model ordinance many years ago and that nobody had done any work to make it the model ordinance of today. And so what I did, as I have done for thirty years when I have questions that raise constitutional questions, is to call on Professor Martin Margulies, who is a retired professor of constitutional law at Quiddity Act. He's also on boards of directors that we share. I've known him for a long time. He's way smarter than me and certainly will know more about First Amendment issues related to parades or anything else than I will on my best day. So I called him and asked for his help. He was initially somewhat reluctant because as it turns out, he was representing the ACLU in an analysis of this ordinance. I said, Marty, gee whiz, we need your help. We're not looking to write an ordinance that the ACLU opposes. And so for the next three months, I worked with Professor Margulies and with Renee Redman of the ACLU of the ACLU to modify the model ordinance so that it would pass constitutional muster today. There are, I will tell you, are no guarantees, but this product is infinitely better than the draft that we originally presented to you. It is the product of give and take between my office and the ACLU. It either addresses or considers all of the questions raised by ACLU in a legitimate way. So I will say this about it, you know, maybe we'll, I will be proved wrong and this ordinance will be challenged successfully, but it will not be as a result of blind indifference or malice. It will be with every effort to create a product that accomplishes the goals that you want while not trampling the rights of people in this community to celebrate this place.
Thank you, Mr. Gotchak. Appreciate it. Mr. Sadi, I'll work my way down this into the case.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a full and fair disclosure, Professor Margulies was a professor of mine back in law school and the consultation with him certainly sheds a very good constitutional light on your deliberations. And this proposed ordinance came to us in response to these impromptu, spontaneous demonstrations, parades, whatever you may call them, that occurred several years ago and occurred multiple times. Before I go on, I must say that the committee that worked on this and the legal staff that worked on this do need to be commended. This is a very thorny issue, very difficult. They toiled through many other side issues, many lengthy and probably somewhat boring and protracted meetings and reams of legal research. The problem, though, is that the ordinance doesn't regulate, I think, the very issue that brought this before us. It does not regulate parades resulting, excuse me, it does not regulate parades unless they result from some type of prior planning. It even goes beyond parades to public assemblies that result from prior planning, which is not an issue, I think, that brought this issue before us. It affects much more than what brought this issue before us without addressing the initial problem. I think to sit on this dais as a councilperson and to assure those members of the public that spoke here tonight in favor of this ordinance that this ordinance will address, regulate, limit, or impact the concerns that brought this ordinance before us that they raised tonight, for me, would be misleading because it doesn't address those. In prior committee meetings, our deputy chief, our corporation counsel have stated that the impromptu parades, those that lack prior planning, would not be covered by this ordinance. They're expressly exempt, and they must be. You can't regulate something that someone is not engaging in prior planning in order to come up with a plan to present to the city. With regard to the fines, the city's attorney stated at previous committee meetings that the fines could not be imposed on just anyone who participated, but that it would have to be somebody who knew that the event required a permit and, secondly, participated knowing that no permit was obtained, which is very difficult for those who sort of spill onto the streets and join a march. In fact, it would probably be the organizing committee only that could be fined. And with regard to the amount of the fines, you know, the city is limited by the state. If we wanted to impose fines of a thousand or two thousand dollars to stop certain conduct, we're very limited. The state statute has limited city to impose fines to approximately a hundred dollars for general safety, health, and welfare. We'd have to change state law, and we've tried in the past, and the mayor has tried in the past, and those have been blocked at the state level. The main problem impacting our residents is not with twenty-five people as this ordinance would cover, or fifty people or seventy-five, but with hundreds of people blocking our roads, blocking our sidewalks, blocking intersections, blocking driveways, which the deputy chief in the past, and I think the police chief stated here tonight, is currently a violation of our existing traffic laws, both at the state level and the local level, as well as a bunch of other health, safety, and welfare laws that we have on the books. While even some impromptu parades may have, as we discussed at our committee meeting, some prior planning, some discussion, if the issue came up, as if we're watching a game, it's a playoff game, and there's a bunch of people saying, "Hey, if the Sox win, we're going to go run down Main Street and we're going to beep our horns."
Maybe not the Sox.
Well, based on this season so far, but I was born in Boston. What am I going to do? But that being said, but simply a minor discussion is not prior planning under state case law. Prior planning to sort of incur the imposition of the regulation of government requires a substantial step to the execution of what you plan to do. So talking at a bar about getting together after the game would not make it prior planning, which would subject us to the ordinance, unfortunately, so it wouldn't cover that conduct. Beyond that, though, this ordinance will impose restrictions, I think, on those who obey the law currently, while expressly exempting, as it must under the law, those who break our laws, who break our social compact of common decency to their neighbors and should be fined, punished, and prosecuted under existing laws. I also think the ordinance goes far beyond regulating parades. For those who may not know, it regulates public assemblies, not just on streets and sidewalks, but in public parks and other places that are owned by the city of Danbury and possibly the state, which could possibly exempt it. Twenty-five people or more gathering in a public place, doesn't seem to be the problem. It seems to be many more people gathering on our streets and sidewalks. So with that, what I would offer is the following amendment to allow this ordinance to still afford the city notice of parades, to allow the chief of police to have at least some level of oversight with regard to permitting, but not to go beyond that, which seems reasonable. The amendment would be as follows: to amend Section 1115A to increase the number from twenty-five people to more than one hundred people; to remove subsection D, public assembly; and to limit the restrictions or the regulations to those events that would block sidewalks and streets as opposed to the broader definition covering places, public areas, excuse me.
Seconded by Counselor Perkins. We are now on amendment to the ordinance as proposed, so any debate would have to relate to the amendment. Any amending of this particular ordinance would require back to public hearing and back to the process, again, to make clear that the council's way of process. Having said that, any discussion waiting to be debated. Mr. Lotell, then, Mr. Sadi.
Thanks, Your Honor.
On the amendment.
This ordinance seems to have four levels of discomfort for the community that it addresses. The first level, interestingly enough, is essentially nothing at all. The second level is some minor interference. The third level is some substantial interference, this has to do with traffic, pedestrian and vehicular interruptions. And the fourth and final level seems to be closing. In other words, the ordinance appears to kick in when an organizer, again, as Counselor Sadi eloquently stated, this only affects prior planned events, but it seems to kick in or require a permit when an organizer believes there is going to be some amount of interference with the normal flow of traffic, whether that's pedestrian traffic or vehicular. And this applies to both parades as we know them, people marching down the street, and also.
Senator, I just want to question, you're really going to keep your comments to the amendment, not to the ordinance? We'll be back to debating the ordinance once we hear the amendment. Go ahead if you want to address Mr. Sadi's amendment.
The amendment is to remove section, I believe it's the assembly definition, which would be 1115D. Public assembly means any meeting, demonstration, picket line, rally, or gathering. This, that particular section, it didn't really come up when this initial parade ordinance was conceived because, again, the conception of this was to somehow regulate, restrict, or attenuate these massive, at the time, what the community felt were massive, impromptu demonstrations of a parade-like event. And we found out almost immediately that the parade ordinance can't address those. How the assembly ordinance wound up in there, I can't remember. I tried to, I was not on the ad hoc committee. I tried to attend every one of them, but I don't remember how it specifically got in. I'm sure there was a good reason for it, probably some sort of way of sneaking out of claiming you're having a parade by saying that you're having an assembly, so it might have, at the time, seemed like a good idea. The problem now is that it's a bad idea, and the reason that this is a bad idea is because the ordinance now is internally inconsistent, and that's a cardinal sin for an ordinance. If the ordinance insists that you have to get a permit.
It's about the amendment. You're really going to stick to the amendment?
Right, okay. This is about the assembly portion of the amendment. The ordinance insists that you have to get a permit if you're going to interrupt traffic. If you're not going to interrupt traffic, you still have to notify the police, but you don't have to get a permit. The inconsistency is follows, and this is from 1122, this affects both assembly and parade. "The chief of police shall issue your permit when he finds that you won't substantially interrupt the movement of other pedestrian or vehicular traffic next to your route of location." The word that they use is contiguous, which means, it's from Latin, it means next to. So you need to get a permit to have your assembly if you think you're going to be interrupting traffic, but the police can't give you that permit if they think you will be interrupting traffic. And that is a very major inconsistency because it essentially means, for the most part, you will be granted your permit, but when someone isn't granted that permit, they can then take us back to court and say to the judge that, "Look, these guys are essentially ignoring their own ordinance." So yes, it's a good amendment. Let's remove the assembly. Let's send this back to public hearing. Let's remove the internal inconsistencies. There are a few more, and I can speak to them later, but the real problem with this, putting aside constitutionality issues and whether we think it is or it isn't, or you're in favor of regulation or not, the basic problem with this ordinance that a lot of people worked really hard on and changed and evolved over the last twelve to fourteen weeks is that it's now become something that is internally broken and it does need to be fixed. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lotell. Counselor Tabersek, on the amendment.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the amendment, I guess, knowing that we have a hundred and fifty-two sworn officers, when we come down to this issue of permits for public assembly, I wish Mr. Foley hadn't left because I think we could hire him. He could work full-time in our special division of public assembly permitting in the Danbury Police Department. But I want those a hundred and fifty-two folks doing police work. And the public assembly inclusion at that low number of one more than twenty-five puts an awful responsibility on the police department. I like the parade permit. It was Chinese border torture, but you finally warned me down, Attorney Gotchak. You know, I think we can have reasonable time, place, and manner on parades, and there are a few of them, but unless we're going to hire Carl Foley and give him half of our permit center down in the basement for the long lines of people coming in for their public assembly permits, I think we need to adopt the amendment.
Thank you. Counselor, any further discussion on the amendment?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, on the amendment, I think one of the things an ordinance needs to obtain is two things, is to protect our public, but it's also not to create undue hardship on our police department by having twenty-five persons who will, in fact, do more harm than good, because twenty-five is a very low number. I mean, this discounts twenty-one alone, and if you were to walk outside, that would be considered a public assembly. But I think if you have at least a hundred people, I think that would be, will take some of that undue hardship away from our police and will help manage it a little better so they don't have to be day-to-day accepting permits for twenty-five, twenty-six people. Well, in my opinion, I don't think that'll be, is a problem on the police to handle an assembly of twenty-five people. That really doesn't cause a lot of traffic violations or disruption to where it needs a permit. So I would hope that this council will, again, approve those, this amendment as well, but I'd also like to make a friendly amendment as well, if Counselor Sadi will also accept it, is also on Section 1118 on applications. So this was also brought up in committee, it was also brought up on, at the public hearing as well regarding the number of days required to be submitted to parade permit. Currently, it says three days is the max, is, I guess, the minimum allowed, but I guess Chief Baker said that that'll cause hardship to his department because three days may not give him enough time to get the proper number of police to that event. So, for example, if you had, on a Thursday evening at four o'clock, I come to Chief Baker who says, "I have a permit for a two-thousand parade for Sunday," well, that's within the three days that's required. But to give him one day to get twenty police officers to that event would be very difficult indeed to obtain. So would he sit at the committee that five days is more than enough at the time to get enough police to any event? So I'd like to make, again, make that friendly amendment to change on 1118 and paragraph B from three days to five days.
Mr. Sadi, do you accept that as a final amendment?
Yes, sir.
For a second, to discuss the amendment. Okay. Seeing that, then, Mr. Sadi's motion is remembered. Now, we're back to the amendment. I'm on this side. I know Mrs. Serrano's had her hand up, so Counselor McGee.
Thank you. It's no secret, any, any here, that my passion for this particular ordinance, being one of those people that worked on the committee, I think that Mr. Sadi's amendment has some merit, but I'd hate to see us amending this ordinance on the fly like this. So I would like to make a recommendation to recommit the ordinance to committee and discuss these things. And I'd also like to invite all the people that came here tonight to talk for the first time on this ordinance and bring up issues that we were not aware of perhaps, or nobody mentioned in the months and months and months that we had committee meetings. Would you please come and participate and make your ideas known while we're working instead of after our work is done?
We currently have an amendment, a motion to recommit will supersede the amendment. A motion to recommit will, for the council's information, refer this back to an ad hoc, back to a public hearing. I don't believe, is there a debate, Mr. Gotchak, on a motion to recommit? There certainly is debatable. We need a second right now.
Second.
Second amendment, Mr. Lotell. So the motion would be to refer it back to an ad hoc, which we don't have, any changes made, we're going to have to go back to public hearing, and we'll see you in about three years. Having said that, is there any debate on this particular issue? Mr. Jimbetta, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We are on the motion to recommit.
I'm sorry?
We are on the motion to recommit and send this back to committee.
I withdraw.
Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just as a point of order or clarification, in order to recommit, is that a simple majority?
Thank you. Say again, Mr. Seaberry?
I should answer you. The question was, in order for this to be recommitted to committee and public hearing and all that, does it have to be a simple majority to do so?
Yes, a vote would be a simple majority. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to recommit? Having said that, I'm going to ask the, seeing none, then, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. I'd ask for a roll call.
Clarification, Your Honor?
Motion would be to re-
Yes, is a root here?
A yes vote would send us back to committee, back to another public hearing, and a no vote would be to continue on with the debate and discussion tonight.
McMahon? Negashet? Johnson? Bombetta?
No, thank you.
Calentreno? Perkins? Genix? Esposito? Sadi? Cabo? Eso? Metello? Diggs? Tysholz? Riley? Serrano? Seaberry? Stanley? Tabersek? Taverzak?
Yes.
Okay.
Based on the discussion tonight and based on the fact that we have beat this ordinance to death over the last 10 months, I think it's time we act tonight. I'm gonna exercise my right to vote here, which means that there will be a 10-10 tie, which kills the motion to recommit. We'll have further discussion on the amendments as proposed. Point of order?
Challenge the chair.
Motion's made to challenge the ruling of the chair. Is there a second to challenge the ruling of the chair? First, let me just rule that Mr. Sadi is out of order. He's challenged that, seconded by Mr. Shinisi, then discussion on the ruling of the chair. No discussion. Mr. Gotchuk, did you want to clarify the?
The Parliamentarian? The chair may vote to make or break the tie when it affects the result. In this case, the vote stands prior to the mayor's vote at 10 to 9 in favor. If he, 10 to 9 in favor, if he votes in the negative. So, without his vote, 10 to 9, it passes. With his vote, if he chooses to vote no, then it becomes 10 to 10, the motion fails. So, he makes the tie.
So, Mr. Sadi has challenged the ruling, and Mr. Gotchuk on this.
With that, will- With that explanation to the council, I accept Corporation Council's ruling and withdraw my objection or challenge of the chair.
Motion's been made, withdrawn, seconds withdrawn. We're back to the amendment as, we said, we have a friendly amendment for Mr. Shinisi and Mr. Sadi, and now we're back to Mr. Sadi's amendment.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the amendment, as amended. With the defeat of this going back to an ad hoc committee, I would urge my fellow council members to adopt this amendment before us, before moving forward on this ordinance as proposed. The reason for offering this amendment on the floor and asking for this vote is to allow the ordinance to go forward in the best manner that we can do during this council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Any other discussion relating to the amendment? Mr. Trembetta, did you want to address the amendment? I called on you regarding the recommitment.
I, I had a little confusion on the spontaneity issue. If there's spontaneity in regards to any type of assembly or parade or group or whatever, is it true that our police department can respond within probably 10 minutes?
Due to the chief, to me to the chief, I would say, sure.
Okay. So, if they can respond to something within 10 minutes, why is the five-day a necessary, a necessary time limit for the chief of police if he could, to enact a proper response to a parade that probably will not even need that type of protection due to the fact that we will know the where, when, how, and length? It just confuses me.
I think, I think this purely comes from an administrative position that the chief has, that given a choice between three days and five days to act on a- Given a choice between three days and five days to act on a application, you'd rather have five days than three days. I think it's just merely an administrative, ministerial concern he has. I don't think it's an issue about being able to react.
Well, in regards to that, if the, if the chief of police would like the five days, if there's a consideration of increasing from 25 to 100, and the third, I'm sorry-
May I remove the mail, Your Honor? I'll submit Trembetta. The, it would be one to increase Section 1115A to 100 from 25, to remove the public assembly portion and any related portions throughout the ordinance, and to limit the regulations and restrictions to activities that would occur on sidewalks and street and not other areas of public assembly. And then the friendly amendment would be to increase, obviously, from three to five days in 1118 subsection B.
Thank you. Mr. Gotchuk, did you want to? I won't take much time. Counsel, what, counsel?
I request your indulgence, just for one moment, to just make a comment about the change from three to five days. This is an issue that was painful for me because I've made it a practice for 30 years to support department heads and to listen very carefully when they speak, particularly police chiefs, for obvious reasons. The change from three to five days is a perilous thing to do constitutionally. If you delay someone's speech, sometimes you effectively squash it. And courts have focused on how much time, how much lead time you must give a municipality to process an application. And cases exist in which five days has, has been deemed by courts to be an unconstitutional restriction when it comes to time, place, and manner. I just urge you to exercise caution here.
Mr. Trembetta?
Yeah, this was, the three to five day issue by Attorney Gotchuk was brought out at committee, and the three day was not an arbitrary number that the committee members came up with. It was a number based on trying to protect the rights and not interfere with the rights of all the citizens of Danbury, and as a safety issue, definitely as a safety, we're, we have to go back to the other amendment, but I will have to vote against the amendment by Mr. Sadi.
Mr. Kaljim.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd be more inclined to support Mr. Sadi's amendment if he would amend his amendment to 50 people rather than 100. I think 25 is too little, and I think 100 is too many. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Kaljim. From Saraceno.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have just a question. I don't know, I guess maybe to you or to the Parliamentarian here.
On the amendment.
Can we separate these two issues in this amendment?
Like, you know, I, you can separate, you can separate the question as well. I think you certainly complicate the question.
I understand the complication, but I just think that they're two entirely different issues being tied together.
I think what the best way to do that would be for Mr. Shinisi to withdraw his friendly amendment with Mr. Sadi's consent and go back to Mr. Sadi's main amendment, and then if Mr. Shinisi wants to offer another amendment after we have an upper-down vote on Mr. Sadi's amendment, he can then be somewhat inclined to do so. I think that'd probably be the easiest way, versus splitting the question. If anybody found that, you get anything for today. Okay. Okay, Mr. Shinisi, do you want to withdraw the three to five, or the five to three?
Just a clarification before I read the, to Corporation Council. In section B, it said that the chief could waive the five to three day requirement. How would that affect the eligibility to waive the requirement anyway?
You know, some probably foolish law student says the laws that the judge has for breakfast. I might have a lawyer. It's difficult for me to say. I would much rather go into court armed with an ordinance that says that the chief has the authority to process an application, notwithstanding the fact that he missed, that the applicant missed the deadline, so long as safety isn't compromised. I'm just reporting to you that there are cases where, where longer periods have been strictly, I'm not even, I'm not even gonna stand here and say, "I guarantee you the three days passes constitutionally must pass." Because what the court's gonna say is, "Chief, how long does it take you to get your forces together in an emergency?" And chief's gonna say, "Oh, we can have them here in 45 minutes." And so then the court is gonna say, "Why do you need three days or five or so?"
Okay, so, we're back to Mr. Shinisi.
I'm going to elect two. I meant, remove my motion, my friendly motion.
And Mr. Sadi accepts the rule.
Yes, Your Honor, will and-
Seconded, accepts it. Okay. Okay, any further discussion about the amendment as amended? Well, we just re-amended the, any further discussion on the narrower amendment as presented? Seeing none, then we'll, I'll ask for a roll call vote from that clerk. Yes.
We have a rebuttal on the new motion, please.
Okay, Mr. Sadi, just want to restate your amendment for the record.
Yes, Your Honor. Amend Section 1115A from more than 25 people to more than 100 persons, and obviously track that throughout the ordinance. Remove the application of this ordinance to public assembly by removing subsection D and the related references throughout the ordinance, and limit the application of the parade regulations and restrictions to events occurring on the city streets or sidewalks, excluding other areas of public ownership.
And it's the, that would be the amendment restated. I'm gonna ask the clerk for a roll call vote. A no vote would be not to support the amendment. A yes vote would be to support the amendment. This is the judge.
McMahon?
No.
Magrashet?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Formeda?
No.
Calatrino?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Sheeney's?
Yes.
Esposito?
Yes.
Sadi?
Yes.
Cabo?
No.
Masso?
No.
Vitello?
Yes.
Diggs?
Yes.
Tysholz?
No.
Riley?
Yes.
Saraceno?
Yes.
Seaberry?
No.
Stanley?
Yes.
Taverzak?
No.
All right, so, there being the vote identical to the previous vote of 10-9, again, the chair's gonna exercise his right to vote to tie the vote and kill the motion. We're back now to the, so I would be in the negative. We're now back to the main ordinance. Mr. Cavill.
Your Honor, just for the record, you know, this, this issue has been hashed and rehashed and hashed again. It seems like at every turn, when it seems like we have a resolve to the issue, we have a certain group in the council that just is gonna be obstructionist to this ordinance no matter what, and I just would caution my fellow council people that no matter how this goes back, and if this goes back to committee, this will come out and this will be voted no by certain members of this council regardless. They will vote no on this because they just don't want it, they are obstructing it, and they will do everything they can in their power to obstruct it. I will be voting yes for this ordinance tonight, and I encourage you all to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cavill. Mr. Vitello, now we're back to the main ordinance.
Your Honor, I found that last comment disappointing. The actual vote on the council was 10 to 9 in favor of the amendment. The preceding vote to recommit was 10 to 9. This is not a small portion of troublemakers. This is the majority of the council tonight speaking and would have been heard had his honor not jumped in and exercised his prerogative to vote. This is not some small minority of troublemakers. This is the actual majority of this council that has and has had a problem with this ordinance and its inconsistencies for the past three months. What we have is a small minority that is trying to put its will on the majority of the council tonight and the people of Danbury. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitello. Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Regarding the comments as made by the president of the common council, I find, I find that it's somewhat offensive that one could vote their conscience after listening to people that address this, this body and that people, the president of the common council, that would say that we are just kind of obstruct or whatever it might be for this happen. That's absolutely insane. The whole idea of a democratic council government is to debate the issues, and this issue, you can see, is quite strong, and therefore, for one to speak from a position of more power in all respect to President Powell is totally out of, out of whack. You can't try to limit one's feeling and how they're going to react to a particular role, or, because it's ultimately, it comes down to the integrity, it comes down to our constituency. So, I, I really resent that, and I'm gonna say right on out, and take it for words worth of, or I'd rather not have you do it again.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. I just want to say, I just handed the gavel to Mr. Cavill, and let me just say, ladies and gentlemen of the council, first of all, everybody here respects, A, your commitment and time and hard work on this council for variety of issues, not just this issue. And so I just want to let you know that mutual respect amongst all of us, regardless of your opinion on a particular issue, is critical and utmost as we move forward in this business. And I thank you and salute you, whichever way you vote on, whatever the issue might be, at the end of the day, it's about voting your conscience, about doing what you think is right in the residents of the city of Danbury and what's right for our city. The chair here tonight exercises prerogative because I believe we need to have an upper-down vote on this ordinance. I don't think it does the city good to have continual ad hocs, continual public hearings, as each individual comes up with another iteration and another idea. At the end of the day, I think we've had almost six months on this, and folks have been able to bring their ideas forward during that time period, and people wait till the night that we're ready to adopt the ordinance to, to come up with it, and they're very good at suggesting that they're not, they're not necessarily bad ideas. And certainly, people can come back in with an ad hoc next month to amend these, this particular ordinance to address some of the concerns that were raised tonight. But the point is that at some point, we need to have an upper-down vote on this particular issue, and that's why tonight, I think it's important we address it, we tackle that out. I think the debate's been healthy, and I think that's good, and I think it's positive, and let's try to keep our comments reflective of honoring the commitment each of you put into the city here today. Now, with that, I'm gonna take the gavel back. Thank you, Mr. Cavill and Mr. Sadi.
Your Honor, I'd like to call the questions.
Motion's made to call the questions, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cavill. I don't think there's a, there's no debate in the main motion, call the question. Let's call the roll and call them the question, because I'm sure there'll be some, some others, so just make it easy. Madam clerk?
I'm calling the questions.
The question means we're gonna, we're calling the question, then we'll be, a yes vote, Mr. Vitello makes a good point, a yes vote means that you're ready to vote on the ordinance, a no vote means that you want further debate. Same, same, same.
McMahon?
Yes.
Magrashet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Formeda?
Yes.
Calatrino?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Sheeney's?
No.
Esposito?
No.
Sadi?
No.
Cabo?
Yes.
Masso?
Yes.
Vitello?
No.
Diggs?
No.
Tysholz?
Yes.
Riley?
No.
Saraceno?
Yes.
Seaberry?
Yes.
Stanley?
No.
Taverzak?
No.
You know, Mr. Sadi, I gave it, I gave it half a thought. I gave it half a thought, I really did. But at this time, motion's passed 10-9, motion to call the question. Let's have a vote on this upper-down. Madam clerk, please call it.
McMahon?
Yes.
Magrashet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Formeda?
Yes.
Calatrino?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Sheeney's?
No.
Esposito?
No.
Sadi?
No.
Cabo?
Yes.
Masso?
Yes.
Vitello?
No.
Diggs?
No.
Tysholz?
Yes.
Riley?
No.
Saraceno?
Yes.
Seaberry?
Yes.
Stanley?
No.
Taverzak?
No.
May motion pass as 10-9. Madam clerk, out of 19 minutes. Councilwoman Kaijol has to lead. Let's give her a round of applause for... I can speak on behalf of the entire council and the city and all the department heads. We're glad to see, Mary, that you're, you're back, and we look forward to seeing more of you in the coming months. God bless you. Keep up the good work, and all of us, all twenty members are here to support you as you continue your fight. Great job. Madam Clerk, nineteen, please.
Report and ordinance, ordinance, littering regulations.
At this time, I entertain a motion to waive the reading of the report, as all members have copies, and there's a copy with a file right here. Motion made by Mr. Shinisi. Did you make that motion? Oh, okay. Motion's made by Mrs. Saraceno, seconded by Mr. Perkins. To waive the reading report, all is in favor, waiting, weaving in the port. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
There'd be two, Mr. Shinisi and Mr. Sadi in the negative. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Calvo.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and adopt the ordinance.
Motion made by Mr. Calvo, seconded by Mr. Riley. Discussion under this ordinance. Mrs. Teversack.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm sorry that I had to take this off of the consent to ask the questions, but I did not receive the ordinances in time to ask the questions at the public hearing. So through you, Your Honor, if I may ask two questions.
Please proceed, Mrs. Teversack.
This, in section eleven A two, may sound like a silly question, but can a person litter on their own property?
Do you want to address that to Mr. Pinter?
Yes, through you.
They, they can under eleven dash two, but they can't under the clean Danbury provisions.
That's, that's where we're going next, if I may. In section B of the Clean City provisions, does that section provide to every homeowner, property owner in the city of Danbury?
Yes.
Are there, may I, to the chair, are there approved containers? Do we have a container police that goes on and checks these things?
According to, stop, sorry, according to the proposed ordinance, the, the mayor appointment of the unit of control officer would be the individual that is charged with that responsibility.
And one additional question, and the fine under this section eleven eight dash five is up to a thousand dollars?
This, no, this section has a, has a citation provision that is permitted to, can be used to enforce this, this section, although there are additional civil penalties that can be used. It's primarily the citation procedure. It's a, so if you will, a softer...
A hundred dollars?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teversack. Any other questions about the littering ordinance? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. The littering ordinance, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Mrs. Teversack in the negative. Madam Clerk, item twenty-one, please.
Report and ordinance, newspapers slash vending displays.
This time, council, entertain a motion to waive the reading of the report, as all members have copies, and there's a copy on file with the clerk. There's any motion made by Mrs. Seaberry, seconded by Mr. Calgino. Is there any discussion about waiving the reading of the report? We're on that piece right now. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I just have a motion passing unanimously. And what's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Calvo?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we receive the communication and adopt the ordinance.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Discussion on this particular... Let's start with Mr. Lattello, and then go to Mrs. Teversack.
Thanks, Your Honor. Through the chair to Corporation Council, Les, you and I have communicated a little bit about some of these exemptions, but I would like to ask you if, putting that aside for the moment, if there's anything that we can do short of recommitting to address some of the concerns that were raised earlier this evening.
With respect to the metal boxes, the fact that they're required to be metal, that would be a substantive change. We'd probably have to put that back to the public hearing process. And with respect to the, the other issue, which I had in my mind a moment ago, aside, yes, I'm just thinking, with respect to the size, that also would be a substantive adjustment to the ordinance, because frankly, it does specify exact size. Although I have to say, with respect to that, there is a provision in section eleven... In section eleven B thirteen, which permits the unit official or the director of public works some level of flexibility in cases where there are existing boxes. To what extent that flexibility exists, you know, we have to take a look at, and what's reasonable, I guess, I need to get that term again, but that's what we'd have to look at. So with respect to number one, we may be able, we may have some more flexibility as far as everything. So it's really the metal, how the issue should be.
In terms of the height, I think we could...
Okay. We're stuck on the metal, and how about this signage on the side of the box that was brought up to, for the painting to come something like that?
Yeah, I, I think you got some flexibility on that, with the body of the ordinance.
That's for all the existing ones that are currently out there.
Okay, if I may continue, if we can't address metal tonight, and you think there's some flexibility with plastic and some flexibility with signage, graphics, whatever, could we do another ad hoc to address metal perhaps in the future? Is that, is that possible?
We might. If I could interject, Mr. Lattello, in terms of the application of this ordinance, probably our best way to uniformly do this throughout the city would be to work towards future applications to be consistent of metal, and that the existing ones, we would sort of treat them as pre-existing, non-conforming. So let's say they wanted to utilize the ones they have, and then at some point in the future, they want to replace them, that would be the time where they would rotate to a metal...
That's what I was thinking, too. If I may, I'm not sure that those boxes have been placed yet. I think that might be the problem.
So they, they are out there.
They are.
Yeah.
We, we could grandfather them?
Well, they're not going to be grandfathered as part of location, locations, the issue, not necessarily the size and scope.
But construction.
Construction, we can certainly work with.
And then from the future, we move to it.
And we're going to tell them, look, this is coming. The next ones you purchase, look towards rotating over, because the metal ones don't knock over. They're heavier.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Menstrum.
Thank you, Your Honor. I feel much better about what Councilman Lattello brought up. I, based on the comments from the public tonight, the grandfathering the pre-existing boxes, I, I tend to vote in that. Thank you.
Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just as we didn't read the report, just wanted to just make sure that we're able to implement a sticker system on the boxes, so that people will know right away someone's not registered, just like a weight and measure system, and they can report that.
In fact, I spoke to Mr. Ari Derola, our director of public works, about how to best implement that, and we, we really thought that the sealer of weight and measures would probably be the, the Department of Consumer Protection would probably be the best spot for, for doing the actual sealing. But Mr. Ari Derola would sign off, I think, the location, and then our sealer weight and measure would be, is designated for maintaining and ensuring that they're, along with the unit, to maintain and ensuring that they're up to date and registered in the city.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, Attorney Crin. In addition to the permit portion of this ordinance, is there anything that would kind of curtail the, I guess, proliferation of numerous boxes throughout the city? Let's just say one company wanted to put a thousand of them. If they paid their fifteen dollar fee, can they do that?
There's, there are some clauses in the ordinance that pertain to a roll of boxes. There are some limitations on that. So if you had a thousand boxes, it may be, it would be permissible so long as you comply with the, with the individual placement in individual locations. No total maximum number of boxes in this ordinance, but they will be regulated in particular, particular occasions.
Further discussion, further discussion relating to this ordinance. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
And it would be Mrs. Teversack in the negative. Madam Clerk, item twenty-one, please.
Report and ordinance citations.
Again, we'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the report, as all members have copy. Now, Mr. Seaberry's made that motion, seconded by Mr. Riley. All in favor of waiving the reading report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Calvo?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and adopt the ordinance.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Shinisi. Is there any discussion about the proposed ordinance? Now, Mrs. Teversack.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the director of public works, please, a question.
Sure. Mr. Ari Derola?
He's, what's here?
He's fast. Trying to make a break, weren't you, Mr. Derola?
Almost stopped the hook.
I'm sorry, you know, to answer your question.
She hasn't asked him yet. All right. I'm going to so abuse you in the morning. Okay, Mrs. Teversack, go ahead.
Mr. Ari Derola, we're on the citation portion of the ordinance. Could you tell me the, the number of employees in the Department of Public Works, approximately, across all divisions? I think we're just over a hundred employees. And how many do you think you would be designating to issue citations for the news racks?
I, I would probably come down to about three people.
Wonderful. And would you provide training to them and...
Absolutely. We're actually going to work with the police department to, and I think there's going to be some formal training that is part of this ordinance. So yes, we want to make sure that we're administering the, whatever administration of this ordinance in the correct and most legal way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion about the citation ordinance? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I just have that motion, carries on. Madam Clerk, item twenty-two, please.
Report and ordinance, appointments, membership, and terms. Charles Ito, performing arts.
Mr. Calvo, you want to read this? It's actually...